I'd like to call this meeting of the Lancaster County Council to order. I ask that the clerk note for the record that a quorum of council is present, that public notice of the meeting, including the meeting agenda, has been posted, the required length of time in the lobby of the county administration building and on the county website, and that news media was notified of the meeting time and place. I welcome you to your county council meeting. Would like to recognize former chairman and chairman of the CTC, Mr. Rudy Carter, is joining us tonight. Good to see you, sir. I've asked that we all take a moment to turn off or place on vibrate any cell phones or pagers, and thank you for not wearing any caps or hats in the council chambers. And please be considerate of others in the room by refraining from conversations during the meeting. I'd ask that we stand and join council for pledge of allegiance, followed by the invocation given this evening by Councilmember Jose Luis.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Thank you for allowing us to live in this great nation, in this great state, and in this amazing county. Give us the wisdom to lead with kindness, with love, with curiosity, representing our constituents to the best of our abilities. In Jesus's name, we pray.
We don't have any public comments this evening, so we'll move on to the beginning of our agenda.
Ms. Oh?
There, we do have a couple of online comments, correct?
We do. Do you want to approve the agenda first? I'm sorry.
We have a motion to approve the agenda submitted. I have a motion by Mr. Blackman, a second by Ms. McGriff. For all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. It's six, four, and zero against. Now, Ms...
Yes, Mr. Chairman and council members, you have one electronic citizen's comment that was submitted. It was from Conrad Trapp, who lives on Stanley Trail, and he wrote in regarding ordinance 2024-1893, and he supports the change from permitted with review to conditional use.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to item 6A, a special presentation. Lancaster County Traffic Calming Program update. Mr. Jeff Kato, Public Services Director, and Mr. Phil Leiser with KCI Technologies.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Vice Chair members of council, here this evening tonight to give you an update on the traffic calming program. This is a program that started a few years back, and it's really growing, and that's why we wanted to give you an update on it, just to kind of guide you through some of the things we have done and some of the questions that we may be able to answer tonight. I have with me tonight Mr. Phil Leiser from KCI Technologies. They assist the county with pretty much all things traffic calming, traffic-related. So I'm going to turn it over to him, let him go through a quick presentation, and we'll entertain any questions afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Thank you very much for letting me come. I appreciate the opportunity. It's been great working with Lancaster County, and I'm hoping that the program is meeting your expectations. As Jeff said, this is very brief. What I've basically done is sat down and said, okay, we're going to go over what the traffic calming really is, just kind of refresh your memories. We're going to talk a brief overview about what the traffic calming project program is. We'll talk specifically the work that we've been doing, the results to date, and the next steps. Please, at any time, if you've got questions, please interrupt. We'll answer them as we go. So why are we talking about traffic calming? You all sitting up there know very well that developments are coming in. They're coming in a little bit more dense. They're becoming a little bit more large. Property prices across the county are becoming a little bit more expensive, and you're having to jam your developments in to make things work. With that, a growing number of speeding complaints. I know you all have probably heard them endlessly. And enforcement is great, but we can't expect the sheriff's office to be out there all the time. So what is traffic calming? And I'm not going to sit here and read everything to you. It's basically, traffic, or excuse me, driving is basically something you do self-consciously. You're just, you're doing it, you just know it as a reflex. Well, if you put some items in the driver's way, if you change the way it looks, you change the characteristics of the roadway, it gets them to slow down. Slowing down is what our intent is here, try to get them to adhere to the speeds, be a little more safer for the pedestrians and bicyclists who may be using the subdivision neighborhoods. The purpose is to make the driver aware of its surroundings, encourage lower speeds, increase safety overall for all users. Little graph over to the right just shows you that the faster you go, the greater your likelihood of injury. There are three solutions to traffic calming. Education, obviously. Now, education is everything from sitting down and teaching people during, how to, teaching them how to drive. But then it also goes beyond that to like speed limit signs, caution signs, those kinds of things, that's education as well. Enforcement, we just talked about, sheriff's office, highway patrol, those folks. And then last but not least is the engineering aspect, which is what we're here to talk about today. Physical solutions of how to slow people down in neighborhoods. On March 9th, 2021, you all adopted your traffic calming program. Unfortunately for all of us, 2021, COVID hits and everything pretty much grinds to a halt. 2022, we did get the program to start picking back up some momentum. People are submitting in. Traffic starts moving again at normal pace, and in 2023, we had the program in full swing. So the traffic calming criteria... Is this a new slide, Jeff? It's new slides. The traffic calming program criteria. What you all said, sat down and says, you know, we don't want speed tables everywhere. We don't want speed humps everywhere. We want them where they need to be placed, where we truly have speeding problems. So the road speed, the 85th percentile speed must be greater than 10 miles an hour over the posted speed limit. What does 85th percentile mean? I don't know. It's a traffic term that sits down and calculates what the typical driver drives, 85th percentile. This is something that's kind of a standard across the board for IT folks. They use that to gauge how fast traffic is going and how fast they are, how well the corridor is moving. Traffic flow and impacts of side streets. We also have a lot of feeder roads that come into these neighborhoods. They're roads that maybe don't necessarily have residents in that neighborhood. They're feeding just into a collector road. Sometimes these speed humps will, speed tables will help deter those as well. Now, of the program since we started, we've had 25 studies completed to date. Now, you're going to see a list, or I'm not going to sit here and read them all or go through each one of them and be cognizant of your time, but I do want to draw your attention to, you'll see several roads that have like numbers beside them, one, two, three, and I think there's even a number four. What that is, is as we were getting the program started, and people were getting used to what we were doing, a lot of people would come back and say, hey, whoa, 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 I don't trust those numbers. How did you do that? Some of them came back and said, hey, we want it put in a different place. Would you mind doing that for us? We even had one neighborhood who called us up and said, who put the bomb out on the light pole? Because it's a box, and we'll shoot a picture of it in a few minutes. And it was a little bit strange looking, so they called in and wanted it taken down immediately. We did that. We got back with the HOA, educated the community, went back out. All those additional studies were done at no charge to Lancaster County. We wanted the program to be successful, so we went out and did those secondary accounts ourselves. Of those 25 studies that have been completed, three of those have qualified for your program. They met the 85th percentile speeds that needed to be done, that needed to be there for the, to qualify for the program. Niven Road, Lakeview Landing, which is in Point, I think Point Carpenter Road, and then Rosemont Drive. Niven Road, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, is the one that has been approved and has gone through all the necessary steps and had the speed tables installed. We'll talk a little bit more about that in just a minute. Want to give you a general idea of where they're all located. As we talked about, neighborhoods that are densely populated, very tight, as you have up in your panhandle, those are the ones that are really hitting you first and have been, have been the most vocal of the speedings. Now, as you see there in the red and blues off to the right on the map, yes, that is all concentrated in the northern part. However, we do have additional requests that are coming in and for the southern part of Lancaster County as well. As a matter of fact, East Park Drive was one that's a little bit further south of Lancaster, the city of Lancaster, and we just completed that study. We went and picked up the equipment on Saturday, and we're studying the data now. We'll be adding that to the list of projects completed. Going back to Niven Road real quick, is the first road to qualify for the program. The 85th percentile speeds on that road were 48 miles an hour. At the time we did the study, the posted speed was 35 miles an hour. We have been talking with Public Works, and we would like to consider, we'll be coming back to you, I think, later, to consider reducing that speed because of some of the curves and some of the characteristics of the road down to 25. But even at 35, the project still made that, met that 85th percentile. The highest speed recorded on that road was 77 miles an hour. So astonishing. Real quick, just in the picture there, you have a picture of the two speed humps that we put in. This is one of the two. These are mats that are portable. Once you put them in, you can leave them, or you can take them back and either reinstall them somewhere else, or you can revamp them. You can do whatever you want to with them, a little bit more versatile than having a hard pavement in there. I'm not saying that a hard pavement's not something to go to in the future. These were, seem to be a good use on Niven Road, and it does give some other characteristics that are more acceptable to the drivers as well. So that has been successful. As a matter of fact, I don't have... There we go. I don't have a full week's worth of comparison data, but what I did want to show you very quickly is just a snapshot of what we were able to go out and look at on Niven Road for a four-hour period. We went from 25, 24.6% of those drivers being compliant with the speed all the way up to 60%. 60% of the drivers were now being compliant with the speed. More importantly, we went from almost 40%, 36.9% that were exceeding the speed limit by 10 miles an hour or greater, down to the 10.5%. So really summarize that very quickly. The program does work. The one installation we've had to date has definitely slowed cars down. What we'd like to do in the future, as we continue these programs, this program with you, we'd like to go back out and do a full week's worth of study at Niven, just so that, again, on our dime, to make sure we're showing that the program's working and it's successful. With that, I believe that's all I had. I do have the picture down in the bottom right-hand corner of the piece of equipment we've put out there. It is a stealth radar. It does check the speeds without having to have tubes out on the road. Very important, I tell every neighborhood that we go to, this does not record license tags, numbers. It doesn't take pictures. It just does dumb data of what cars are going by and how fast they're going by. So, but that's what it was, and that's what someone thought may have been a bomb sitting on the side of a utility. We got all that worked out, went back out and counted. Everything was fine.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions?
Just for clarification, so when you're talking about the 85th percentile of speed limits over 10 miles per hour over the speed limit, so I'm assuming the speed limit in Niven's Road was about 35 miles per hour?
It is currently posted at 35 miles an hour, yes, sir.
So then, the, what you were saying was 48 miles per hour is 85% of the vehicles driving on Niven's Road were going 48 miles per hour? Is that what you mean by that?
It's a little bit different. It's not quite the numbers. It's 15% of the vehicles were traveling 10 miles an hour or greater.
Okay. So it's 15% are over that 10-mile limit. 85% are within it, but 15%. So if it's greater than the 15%, then it's a bigger issue? Okay.
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming there's a traffic count that will also be factored into the equation whether to put them there or not? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. In your program, in your actual traffic calming ordinance, you have numbers in there that say minimum and maximum numbers, length of street, those kinds of things. All those do factor in, yes, sir.
So when's the next one going in? Where's it going?
Say it again now.
Where's the next one going in, and where's it going?
We have two that have qualified since that we're in your slide yet. We're waiting on contact. We have points of contact with the homeowners association of both Lakeview Landing and Rosemont. In fact, we're meeting with Rosemont next week, to sit down and see and rely on the placement and see what the next steps are. And we have several. We try to do about five a year is what we budget for. You know, if you notice, we asked for a little increase there to do some more studies. So we kind of take them as they come. Staff assesses them first, then we reach out to Phil. So that's, that's the thing. As you can see, we've done, you know, 25 some odd studies and probably got about 10 or 15 more inquiries recently. So we have a lot in the hopper.
How much are each one of those studies?
Study itself, what the county's run, is about $5,000 apiece.
Okay. So if you had citizens in a community that volunteered the funds to get the study done, so it's not dependent on county allocating those funds, is that something that you all have the capacity to do?
Not budgetary, no, sir. What, how we crafted that ordinance is it says the county funds the study.
Okay.
We assess it to make sure, like you said, the length of street, the average traffic count, this, that, and the other, that there is a need, then we'll perform the study. And then after that, we...
I'm just wondering if there's an ability, if residents decide that as a community they want this, because I know I've heard Reed Point is one of those communities, if they could raise the funds, donate those funds to the county, and then have it allocated for specific purposes? Just something to maybe think about.
They do have to pay for the improvements, sir, for putting the humps in. Are there any additional questions?
No, except I understand from residents on Niven Road that some of the cut-through traffic's not happy.
Most definitely.
I think that Jeff got a majority of the calls. I'm sure y'all got some calls, but it was Phil over to us. I don't know how they got us, but they got us. I will say this for the council. I know you guys get phone calls every day about different complaints. This program offers you something you can give to the citizens as an answer. Hey, we realize that the sheriff's office can't be out there all the time. We understand that. And what we can offer to you as a county is we'll let you look at this program, see if you qualify for it. If you truly have a speeding problem, we'll give you a solution you can install. That is a whole lot better than they call you up and say they're speeding, and you say, well, call sheriff's office. I mean, it really does make the citizen feel a little bit more engaged, and they feel like they have a little bit more of a choice.
Those that have been through the program and didn't meet the criteria, that's tough for them to swallow, because they do think that they have a big problem in their neighborhood, and then, you know, the data doesn't necessarily bear that out.
There's a couple of things that we do once a development, like goes through everything, and if they have questions because they didn't qualify, we sit down with them one-on-one and say, hey, guys, this is what you've got. You've got a cluster of time, which we can determine by this report. You've got a cluster of time from 1:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon, you've got somebody always doing 50 miles an hour or better. So two things can happen with that. Number one, you can get the sheriff's department out there for that period of time to tick it. But then they can start, they can become aware of who those drivers are and at least maybe have a more of a one-on-one or understanding of who those troublemakers, for lack of a better term, are.
Right. Any additional questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to item 7A. B, C, and D on our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve consent agenda item 7A, 7B, 7C, and 7D.
Have a motion by Mr. Mossdeller. Second by Ms. McGriff. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, it's unanimous, six to zero. Okay, we're going to move on to our non-consent agenda now. First item is item 8A, a resolution, Resolution 1260-R2024 regarding establishing the local option sales tax credit factor. Mr. Marstall.
Mr. Chairman, council members, this is an annual resolution we bring before you in conjunction with the budget process. For voters, they approved a 1% local option sales tax and use tax under Code 410-1031. Of the state's 46 counties have this sales tax, but what it is established is to offset the property tax. And so every year, we do a credit factor so that the voters know that they are getting money back and deducted from their property tax bill based upon how much revenue is generated from the local option sales tax. And so we have to establish a credit factor each year. Our county auditor puts that together. There's a split that the state treasurer identifies with this rule. And so the auditor has done her work, and we have the credit factor of .000842, which is reflected on everyone's property tax bill. And so this is a resolution adopting that credit factor as established by the county auditor. If you have any questions, the county auditor is certainly here to take any questions.
Any questions? Hearing none.
Is the same as last year?
It changes.
Is it significantly different than last year?
Not significantly, but it is going up some, yes.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve item 8A? Still moved?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. McGriff, a second from Mr. Graham. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, I saw that it's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. McGriff. Okay, we're going to move on to item 8B. We have a public hearing and third reading of ordinance 2024-1904 regarding amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget regarding a departmental budget transfer. Ms. Harris.
Good evening, Vice Chair, council members. This is the third reading of ordinance, and we're requesting council approval to initiate an internal department budget transfer within the Rose Department in the amount of $155,000. And this request is submitted because the budget transfer exceeds the amount allowable for administrator approval. And the budget transfer would allow for the purchase of additional stone in the Rose Department, the price of stone increase, and the fluctuation in the weather. Inclement weather has required additional purchases that's outside of what the budget would allow. And so there's savings in their line item for contracted services for overhead signage, for which they will forego bidding additional contracts for the overhead signage to be able to transfer the funds and purchase the stone that they need.
All right. Thank you very much. We do have a public hearing scheduled. No one signed up for that, so we will move on to the vote. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Mossdeller, a second by Ms. McGriff. Any discussion? Hearing none, I call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, it's unanimous, six to zero. Thank you. All right. Item 8C, public hearing and second reading of ordinance 2024-1897 regarding adding property to the Edgewater 2 Improvement District. Mr. Mossdeller and Mr. Season.
Mr. Chairman and council members, this is the second reading where we are making adjustments to the land map at the Edgewater Development. This is had a review from the Forfeited Land Commission to help clean up some of these parcels. Mr. Seasons is here to speak a little bit about the actual number of parcels involved, but this is for, basically, it's a housekeeping purposes. Mr. Seasons, do you want to elaborate on that?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. I'm Michael Seasons. I'm here with Ver Foreman. I'm the county's bond counsel, along with Ms. Franny Heizer here. I wouldn't want to take her thunder. I was up here about two weeks ago for first reading. The total number of parcel, excuse me, the total number of acres that would be added would add up to about 3.39 acres, which is a very small addition to the existing district, which is about, I think it's 1,059 lots, and it is... Sherry, I saw it in the agenda before. I think it's about 350 acres. So it's a very small addition. The reason for the addition is that when going through the normal process of plating the lots within the residential subdivision, it became clear after moving, putting in some of the easements and utilities that the existing lot lines, or excuse me, the existing parcels wouldn't fit within the district as originally drawn. The developer had suggested adding parcels, which if you look in the two exhibits that are attached to the, there are two maps that are attached to the back of the ordinance. The lots that are currently in the district are shaded in green, and the property that would be added is shaded in red. And so additionally, it's a little bit of a parcel in one map, and then land that would represent about, little bits of about 15 or 16 different parcels. So if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to undertake them.
Have any questions? If not, we have a public hearing scheduled for this. We also don't have anyone signed up for it, so we'll move on to the vote. Do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance 2024-1897?
I just got one question.
Okay.
It says redlined version of ordinance showing changes from first reading. I didn't see any, unless I somehow clicked wrong. I didn't see red lines.
No, sir. And this is Michael again. I pulled up the document that was attached to the agenda. I think that the, might have been on my end, but the only two changes were in paragraph, or in section one, which are in the findings, and in paragraph A, the date of enactment of the assessment ordinance was updated from September 27, 2021 to October 25, 2021. And then there was a reference to the present boundaries of the district being shown in Exhibit A attached here, too, and that language was deleted. So they were both cleanup changes. But substantively, there were no other edits to the ordinance.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Graham. Do we have a second? Have a second by Ms. McGriff. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, it's unanimous, six to zero. Okay, we're going to move on to item 8D, second reading of ordinance 2024-1899 regarding amending the Lancaster County code relating to personnel policies. Mr. Marstall and Ms. Merk Dupont.
Mr. Chairman, council members, we've had a couple of conversations about the process to update our county personnel policies. We've had revisions back in 2010, 2012, and 2019, and I'm suggesting some revisions. All council members should have a redlined version and a hard copy of the personnel policies. If you need that, again, please let us know. But this is the step to undo the current process of adopting the personnel policies. This is not an adoption tonight. This is just the first step to say we're not going to utilize what we have. You will have the opportunity on May 28 to do the actual changes, revisions, whatever you want to add from the recommended redlined version, the personnel policies. But this is the first step to undo what we have, and then on the 28th, we'll make any changes you want and do the adoption on the 28th. So that's what tonight's about.
I do not have a hard copy.
Okay, we'll make sure we get you one.
Can I get that on Wednesday when I come for the call meeting?
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve? Still moved? Have a second? I'd hearing a second, then the motion dies for lack of a second.
Where would that put us? Mr. Marstall.
There will be, we'll use existing policies from 2019. There will be, we'll use existing policies from 2019. Oh, there, so there is actually, you can, since this is by resolution, we can bring them back by ordinance. So if you all want to entertain that or not, I'm not sure where you all want to head now based upon the recent action.
Well, maybe because some are requesting paper copies. Maybe once they get the paper copies and do the review, I guess we can talk back to the chair and see whether we can put it back on the agenda.
All right, we'll move on to item 8E. Second reading of ordinance 2024-1893 regarding amending the Unified Development Ordinance relating to Chapter Two and amending non-metallic mineral product manufacturing from permitted with review to a conditional use. Ms. Harden.
Thank you, sir. At the last meeting, we talked about, hmm, we talked about me being allowed. At the last meeting, we talked about some of the options that had come up in staff's research and investigation of what other communities are doing. And y'all gave me your thoughts on the ones that we had. You weren't real excited about restricting hours of operation, so I have marked that as strict, as stricken, or stricken, or just took it off the list. And then implementing stricter air quality standards, we really didn't have a way to go with that because we didn't know how to, at the time, impose any of our own air quality restrictions, considering the capacity that the county has now. You are in favor of, and number two, which is periodic stream testing, which we're going to install within a one-mile radius into the ordinance. You are in favor of three, requiring annual testing of nuisances relating to operations, which we will turn into the code to require operators to turn in annual reports from engineers regarding specific nuisances. We talked about requiring compliance guarantee. That would be a requirement as a condition of permitting or certificate of completion. As an explanation of a term, you might have often heard about the certificate of occupancy or ACO. That is when a building is finished. Not all of the structures that are built for a non-metallic mineral product manufacturing facility are actual inhabitable structures, so they don't get a certificate of occupancy. They're not occupied. They get a certificate of completion. And then you asked about what was the difference between the current setback at 500 feet and going back to half a mile. And in the packet, I had meant to put in maps to show you that. You have a handout at your desk, and I have the images on the screen. We talked about the distance from Catawba River, and we proposed a one-mile separation from the banks of the Catawba River based on groundwater speed. When we talked about the separation from currently, that there's a 500-foot separation between the use and other zones, residential zones, school zones, and the like, we talked about looking at what that, how does that impact? So in evaluating the different zones, we had around, between 48 and 52 lots. Once we cleared up all the data, we ended up with about 48 lots that had industrial zoning. And out of those 48 lots, there were very few that were of the size that would allow for a 2,640-foot separation. One in particular that would is a larger tract against the river here. And as we showed you on the left-hand side, this is what the current 500-foot separation would look like out of the nine properties that make up this cluster of industrial zoning. Four of them would be allowed to use a, or to implement a non-metallic mineral product manufacturing facility onsite in that dark yellow area. The hashtag area is the setback, and the buffer that, on the left-hand side, is the 500-foot buffer. On the right-hand side, the hash goes all the way in toward the middle, and that's the 2,640-foot separation, or the half-mile separation from the property line. When we're talking about a half-mile separation, you have to be separated from a zone that allows for the use. You don't have to be actually separated from the zone. So even if you had a 30-acre piece of property with one house on it, the separation comes from the property line, not from the actual house or use. So that leaves a little area in the middle where there's potential for a non-metallic mineral facility, but that's the only one in this scenario. The rest of the properties are just too small. In addition, if you've added the Catawba River buffer to this, that can remove that opportunity from here as well. We talked about nuisances. Going back, we talked about how Kershaw County has nuisance regulations in their ordinance, and how did they regulate them. Basically, they have it as a nuisance, and if there is a violation found, then they can add on additional billing or additional fines and fees for anybody that's found to have those violations. This is something that you could add in. It's not something that we have staff or machinery to test right now, but if there was a complaint and it was found to be investigated by us, either us contracting with someone or by DHEC as an official violation, then we would have the ability to also find that entity for those.
So was that in the ordinance now?
It will be. Yep. As far as I, unless you tell me differently today, the intent that I got from council was that you wanted to go forward in that direction, try as much as you could to prevent any of these.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was in there.
But Terry, but it wasn't in the existing one we're under right now, though?
No, I know, but it's in the one that's, it's in the conditional use. That's what I'm trying to make sure.
Yep. And if you give me the okay today, we'll finish that out, and you'll have a full copy with all of the provisions in it that you've asked for. It does have to go back to Planning Commission. Anything you tell me tonight, we'll discuss it there May 21st meeting, and then it'll come back to you at the first meeting after that as a finished ordinance for your review.
So I guess the major debate is a setback. And of course, I'm in favor of setting it back to where it was.
And that's what's on the right-hand side.
What was the setback of our neighboring counties? I think you had that.
I did.
Run through it.
Yes, sir. Other counties, Chester County has 150 feet, Ori County has one of the stricter codes in the state, 500 to 1,000 feet, depending upon the adjacent use. Kershaw County had 40 feet, and York County had 500. Lancaster, under the definition of heavy industrial restricted, had the strictest in the state. Next was the Ori County area.
So if I understand you correctly, if we implement both the residential buffer and the half-mile river buffer, there's only, there are no sites in the entire county that would meet those requirements?
That's, with my understanding, yes, sir. Now, I've done the best I can with what I've got.
Okay.
And I'm not an engineer, but that's my estimation, yes, sir.
And this large track you're talking about here is on Riverside Road, is that correct?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Just sites of river chase.
I'm sorry, I don't have it memorized.
Well, I travel that road. I know, take my word for it.
I'm not arguing.
It's okay. So it goes to Planning Commission, they're going to make a recommendation?
Yes. Based on what you tell me today, whether you would like to maintain the 500, whether you'd like to go back to the 2,640, or if you'd like something in between.
So does that mean we're going to take a vote, or a hot and nod, or what are we going to do?
I would be curious about the.
Need a motion that.
I think we ought to be pretty close to our neighbors on, I mean, if we want to do this conditional uses, whatever, it's fine, whatever, but I think we should be consistent with our neighbors. Some of them's too close, like the 150, but I think we ought to be, York County's 500. I mean, I mean, we could go that, Ori County's 500 to 1,000.
Why do they do 500 to 1,000? Why have they got that variation?
Because it's a heavier restriction against residential uses and less of a restriction against other industrial uses.
I would be okay with that one, if it's 500 to 1,000. If it's, if it's going to be next to an industrial, 500's fine, but a residential, I think 1,000.
Put that in the form of a motion?
I'll make that motion that we adopt the 500 for, if it's next to commercial, and 1,000 if it's residential.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Graham.
We need to make sure you clarify. I think it's a motion for second reading.
Okay.
You don't have the actual proposal in front of you. Yeah, so.
All right, so we have a motion for second reading, and then we add the stuff as we go along.
I have a second yet.
So does that, so I'm sorry, so does that include the river buffer as well?
Yes. Yes. I would assume, I'm assuming so.
There's not going to be very many houses in the river. There's not going to be very many houses in the river, so.
No, 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 I'm saying, in addition, so you have the residential buffer plus then the river buffer.
It would include items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6.
Let's see.
And the one number I needed was the one for number 1.
Yeah, but where's the river one on that?
It's not, that's why.
It's not, so it needs to be on there, yes, sir.
Well, I would, I would put the river on there.
That was one thing that y'all agreed on early on.
As part of my motion, I'm going to put the river on there.
And then, is it going to be a one-mile or a two-mile, or, because we, I'm okay with a one-mile.
The river?
That was what staff had recommended as well, but we gave you 1 through 5 in the mapping to show the difference.
All right, I'm going, I'm going to restate my motion. I hadn't got a second yet, so I guess I can restate it. I'm going to restate that we're going with the 500 to 1,000, the same as Ori, with a one mile from the Catawba River.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we really need a motion for second reading, a second, and then for discussion, that was when these amendments could be made to the ordinance that's in front of you in the second reading.
I apologize.
I'm glad you're keeping us straight.
So you make a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have, we have a second from Ms. McGriff. Okay, now it's on the floor, and we can make.
An amendment. We'll make an amendment that we go with the 500 setback from commercial zoning and 1,000 for residential and one mile from the Catawba River.
Okay, we have a second to that.
Who's second?
I'll second that.
We have a second from Mr. Luis. Okay, additional discussion. Hearing no discussion, I will call for a vote for the amendment. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, it passes, six to zero. Okay, now we move back to the main motion. All those in favor of the main motion, please, as amended, please raise your right hands. Passes six to zero. Okay, we move on to item 8F.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself from this one because this person has a stated purpose to rezonate a business that I, I am a competitor.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, we have public hearing and first read in ordinance 2024-1905 regarding rezoning property located at 1540 Old Pardee Road from low-density residential district to rural residential district. Applicant is Peter Seitz. Ms. Harden.
Yes, sir. This is rezoning, as you stated. This went to the Planning Commission last month for public hearing. Property is located at 1540 Old Pardee Road. It's 40, it's almost 47 acres in total. Currently already has access to water, and there's no sewer in the area. Current zoning is low-density residential, which maximum density on that is 1.5 units per acre, and the proposed zoning is rural residential, 1.0 units per acre. The location photos, the subject parcel is shown in the aerial on the left-hand side and facing the property on Old Pardee Road off the right-hand side on the screen. The proposal is the applicant intends to place two homesteads on the parcel and use the remaining land for agricultural purposes. One of those uses is agritourism, farming-based attractions and activities that is defined under our UDO as shown on the screen. There's also state rules that apply to that as well. Current property use with low-density residential, the zoning is consistent with the adjacent use types and is consistent with the new comprehensive plan in the area. Planning Commission held the public hearing during the April 16 meeting. There was no input from the public in the Planning Commission after deliberation, recommended approval of the request.
Is there any questions for Ms. Harden?
What was that vote by Planning Commission, unanimous?
Yes, sir.
The two residents, what's the purpose of those two residents on the site?
My understanding is for people to live in them.
But what kind of people is this for the?
I don't know, sir.
Premier residents, is it going to be rental property?
I don't know, sir. We don't regulate rental property differently than we regulate single-family zoning.
But still, we'd like to know.
Oh, sure. I'll find out. Come back to you at second reading for that.
Any other questions?
Right, a question, too. Across the road from this, this is my district, so I'm real familiar with it. There's some residents there, a lot of houses across the road from it, it's near. I know with agritourism, you know, if he's got animals and stuff, especially hogs or whatever smell, I don't want to create a problem for the neighbors across the road. We got to find out something about that for me to support it, because I can't, you know, people start having problems with smell from that. Most animals don't smell, but hogs, pins is, you know, it's really bad, but.
But the zoning across the road is the same.
To have it at the rear of the property wherever, you know, or something, to cut down on smell, so.
The zoning across the road is the same as what the applicant is asking for as far as rural residential. I don't know that there are serious agricultural uses that would cause that kind of smell that are allowed in that zone, but I can bring that back to you and do a report on second reading.
Okay. I'm just not sure what, I know what agritourism is, but I don't know what they're planning. That's a wide-open thing for vegetation and cattle, whatever. I mean, it can be a lot of things, so.
I'll go into detail on that for second reading report.
I appreciate it.
Sure.
Are there any additional questions? If not, we are scheduled for a public hearing. No one signed up for that, so we'll move on past that. I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it for bringing it to the floor here.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. McGriff, a second by Mr. Mossdeller. Is there any discussion?
I'll support this on the first reading, but I'll get my answers on the second reading. But I'll support it for the first reading, so.
Okay, any additional questions or statements? If not, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes five, four, and one recusal.
Can we put this on the non-consent agenda for next?
Yeah, if it's not a unanimous vote, it automatically goes on non-consent. No.
Does the recusal throw it into non?
Recusal count as, as a yea or a nay? Okay, so Mr. Blackman has asked that this go on non-consent. You got head shakes, so we're good to go. All right, someone would get Mr. Graham. He went out the door. Okay, we're going to move on to item 8G, first reading ordinance 2024-1906 regarding a proposed transportation sales tax. Is there a motion to approve?
I moved.
Have a motion by Ms. McGriff. Have a second. I will second it to bring it to the floor.
Can he do that? Okay.
I just did it. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we have a presentation for you for this item.
All right.
We'll ask Mr. Jeff Cato to come forward. We have a proposal tonight that's been discussion stage for about a year now that we wanted to bring forward to see if council wants to advance this. It is a road funding proposal, and so we have some information about our current program, and then with this proposal to do a transportation-specific sales tax. And so as you see, we're joined tonight by Mr. Rudy Carter, and his committee, the County Transportation Committee, has reviewed this information, but I'll let Jeff Cato start us out, and Mr. Carter. But I'll let Jeff Cato start us out, and Mr. Carter can highlight some of the work of the CTC. Mr. Cato?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, Members of Council. As we've discussed before, we have a road funding proposal in front of you. As you know, Lancaster County has a lot of publicly maintained roadway miles, roughly about 1,400, 900 SCDOT, 500 county or local municipality. And from 2018, 24, 2024, about 94 miles have been paved. And future funding for those have always come from a capital sales tax project two, capital sales tax project two proviso, the Lancaster County Transportation Committee, which is your C funds and gas tax, and a road fee, which is, you know, fairly new, does a little bit of preservation work, so. Not a whole lot of funding in the grand scheme of things for a growing county, but, uh, again, in funding estimates of those, the proviso from capital sales tax project two is $9 million to be completed by 2025. Just a quick update on that, the only two things remaining on the proviso are Rise Lane and Cleveland Street, which were two, we knew those would be more detailed projects and take a little while, but we're hoping to have those bid and let and completed by 2025. CTC roughly averages about $1.4 million a year, which an allotment of that, it's up to 33% now, has to be spent on the SCDOT system. The road fee generates about $800,000. And the only option to address future road needs, and we all, all know county-wide there are road needs, is a dedicated funding stream. So this could be a possibility, and again, subject to a referendum now. County can have a capital project sales tax and a transportation sales tax running at the same time. And potentially Lancaster County could have three sales taxes. Attorney General has provided an opinion that Lancaster County can have local option sales, the capital project sales, and a transportation sales, subject to a successful referendum. And up to 1% can run concurrently with the other taxes. You can impose for no more than 25 years or in smaller increments. Sales tax will end when authorized revenue amount is reached or when the years are up, whichever comes first. And the projected revenue is 400 million, but that's over 15 years, which is kind of what we discussed the time limit on it for. The current 1%.
I can take that. Mr. Cato, yeah, so when we're doing the revenue projections, again, this is what we would use as a basis for our road building program. As of now, we are dependent upon the state's revenue streams. They have been able to give more money the last couple of years for CTC to help deploy. But to have a local option, this would help us be in the driver's seat as to what roads can get done within 15 years versus potentially waiting 25, 30-plus years for CTC, or for SCDOT. But the revenue projection was based on actual 1% capital project sales tax. We've seen the average growth from 2010 to 2023 at 9.2%. You see the actual revenues in FY22 is 15.2 million. And then in 2020, FY23, we realized 16.3 million. So if it's over 15 years, the projection would actually be about 419 million. But that is showing the sustained 9% growth for years one through seven, and then dropping that down just to be conservative for the out-years, eight through 15. But this also doesn't take into account any new revenue drivers of more retail and different things within the county that may come online within the next 15 years. And so that is how we came to the revenue projection for this going forward.
Okay, and in doing that and kicking this thing off, the, we selected our County Transportation Committee to assist us with this, and they reviewed over 132 individual roads, as well as 50-plus intersections, safety concepts, trails, sidewalks, signalization, basically anything transportation-related, they took a look at it. We met with all other, a lot of other agencies. We've met with our MPOs, RFATs, and the COG, SCDOT, both local and district levels. And also, we met with all of our municipalities and, again, even with staff, our public safety departments, EMS, you know, they gave us some ideas, Sheriff's Department, fire, just of where needs, where needs are. They see it every day, just like we do. So the CTC got together and met four times, January 24th, February 21st, March 14th, and March 28th. Seemed like they were cramming into, but they went over a lot and, and recommended over 125 road and transportation-related projects to be funded by this possible funding stream. And they broke it down into several different categories, uh, major road, road widenings, probably the most costly things on there, some things like, you know, Highway 521, again, just traffic and, and some widening purposes there. Henry Harris Road, I'm just highlighting them. You have them all in front of you. I won't go through every road or we'll be here all night. Henry Harris Road, they, they did not recommend that, but after coordinating with SCDOT, because it's both jointly a county-maintained road for a section and DOT or maintains a section, also too, discussing possible a collector road system maybe one day or a collector road plan put in place that could help alleviate some of the main traffic off 521. Henry Harris would be a big part of that, so staff added that one back in. Intersection improvements, I think there were like 11 intersection improvements there. Anything from safety-related to adding turn lanes or things of, of that nature that obviously neither DOT nor the county probably has the funding to do any of this grand scale of, of items within a 15-year time period. Roundabouts, again, to alleviate some traffic, some locations were, uh, being looked at and, you know, like I said, teaming with our MPOs, kind of getting them pushed up the list a little bit, bringing some back to the table, like University Drive and Hubbard Drive, that one's kind of been camped for a few years. So this is a way to kick-start roundabouts like that and get some of those completed. The county-maintained road priorities on here, and we say priorities, it's just things that are fully county-maintained that, that we have to take care of ourselves without relying on the CTC stuff that we maintain. Again, one of those on there, the top one is just, and y'all have heard me say it several times, the Vance Baker Road. That road is in dear need of widening for, for congestion up there. And this, this is the big one, like from staff from Lancaster County's perspective, is a resurfacing rehabilitation of county SCDOT and local municipality-identified roads. These are the things that the county could administer, even for the municipalities or in tandem with the municipalities. We, we got with them, got some lists of roads from them and went over them. But our thoughts on that is the county could probably, if this were to come to fruition, could, could bid out three to four million dollars a year. And that way, you've got work, you've got roads being paved or, or fixed or improved countywide, all during the, the 15-year process there. So from, you know, more a public works and CTC kind of perspective on that, that's, that's a big ticket item. And then too, like I said, we worked a lot with DOT. They have some secondaries, not necessarily primaries, but they meet the average daily traffic. Were they high up on their list, but only because it would be so long before they could get roads like that, like the portion of Lynnwood Drive, Airport Road, Country Club Road, McIlwain Road, things like that, probably would be years off in search of funding rather than having a funding source dedicated to get those projects done. Some, we even looked into some economic development aspects, some road improvements in business parks, some road connectivity, like for that Lot 6 in the Airwell Park. But then one that, that kind of got our attention too is land acquisition for future collector roads. And I'll just say, I'm, I'm county guy, so, but you can't widen your way out of congestion. I mean, you can try it, and it's needed everywhere, so if there were a collector road system for some of these congested areas where you had other options to use, widen out and, and improve those roads, maybe you could get some of the, some of the traffic off the main road, so. But to do that, you gotta have the land, so our thoughts were possibly some of this funding could be used to acquire that land as opposed to waiting for it to be developed and then you couldn't get the right-of-way through there. And then other things like greenways, sidewalk repairs, sidewalk additions. They, they had some, CTC recommended some things for Indian Land Trail, Lindsey Pettis Greenway DOT because they maintain sidewalks. You know, that's, that's a priority for them to get some funding, jump-start it to repair some sidewalks on their state right. And then like a miscellaneous-type item, again, matching funds. If you, if you have a dedicated funding source and streamline of funding can, uh, coming in for roadway improvements, you could use it for some matching funds, whether it's a, a project with the COG or a DOT project or possibly even a CTC project, where you could mix, mix the funds in. Inflation and contingency, like I said, we, we provided concept costs only. We have no idea what it's gonna cost seven, eight, nine, 10 years down the road to, to widen or resurface a road. I can guarantee you, it's probably not gonna go down. Again, property acquisition, especially again, from the county and our county-maintained roads. They are, a lot of them are inadequate for anything to be added to them, for growth, for things like that, and more often for safety. CTC, again, our main source of selecting roads for resurfacing, they will not pave a road unless we can get at least, we want to get 22, ideally, that's our standard in the UDO, but we're not gonna go out and put asphalt on a gravel road and make it 12 feet wide again. We have enough of those we have to deal with now. So to fix those, you gotta get, get the right-of-way, some way, shape, or form, you acquire it or by other means. And historically, right-of-way has either delayed, made a project more costly, or in some cases, flat-out killed a roadway project. And then project management and administration, this thing were passed, were to pass, it'd be a lot for the current staff to handle. We'd probably need to branch out and get, get some help in here for us to do that rather than just consult everything out, probably have a in-house person managing this program. And then just a summary of the transportation recommendations, they totally recommended about 305 million. Again, it's what we went through there, the numbers are in front of you. And then staff came back and reviewed it, and again, just, not just our staff, but DOT staff too, because they have a, a lot of the projects in here are DOT-maintained. We bumped it up probably another 95 million to get you to the projection of the 15 years, projecting 400 million dollars. Again, we added in Henry Harris Road. And again, more particularly threw in some more money for the, the improving of the local roads, the county and municipal and, and DOT roads that maybe probably won't see. If you live on them, a lot of people live on them, have driveways, you might not see your road paved for another 20 years. And you'd be surprised at the calls we get of folks saying, "My road hasn't been paved since 1955," or something like that. So this, this could help us move in that direction, get those done a little quicker. And as you can see by the chart here, just kind of the additional staff recommendations, a little bit more on the major widenings. Definitely, as, as I've stated, the resurfacing of the county-state municipal roads, the signalization, and then a little more in miscellaneous, which gets us the extra 95 million to get you to the 400 million dollar concept estimate.
Then I'll take it from here to close out, is to make sure people understand there are other counties that do have a transportation sales tax currently. They've taken advantage of the state legislation. And then we have two counties that have three local sales tax, similar to what we're talking. To look at the actual county-by-county breakdown of sales tax on the next slide, you can see the list or comparison of what our current rate is and then what a 1% addition would be, and you can look at the counties in the different area or surrounding region with us. And then the next slide has the actual ballot language. This is what'd be a two-question concept for voters. One is to first approve the sales tax use, and it outlines a 15 years or the total 400 million. Council can adjust the years or the dollar amount if you want to. It does highlight the broad categories there. And then the second question that voters would also have to address is actually giving the authority to bond for the money. So if you think about 521, the only way we're gonna be on anyone's radar at the state RFATs is to have some local money in the game. And so what CTC recommends is roughly 60 million. If we need to bond that money to have it in hand, so we can pair it with state money and then pair it with federal money, that will get us in the radar. So the voters would have to approve taking out the general obligation bonds, but it would be against the sales tax revenue. And so you see what the ballot questions would be exactly like. That's what we propose. And then on the last page, the summary is that, as I've said this for the last year, year and a half, is every council member's heard it, people don't like the congestion in 521. People complain about the condition of the roads from potholes to other things. But also thinking about how do we get ahead where we have our high-growth areas, whether it's Edgewater, thinking about other areas of the county. If you look at the over 125-plus roads, there's a lot of action countywide that would be done over the next 15 years. If we don't have a dedicated local funding stream, our options to make some moves would be our own general obligation bond at little increments. But otherwise, we currently will be at the discretion of the state for when they do their road program and provide funding. This is an avenue for us to be on the radar, particularly for 521, but also we're in charge of our own destiny. I mean, most of these are SCDOT roads, and they will have skin in the game, so they will be bringing money to the table. If you do a widening of Henry Harris, there is still state money in that. There's still state money gonna come forward. So I want to make sure everyone understands that. It's just not as aggressive over the next 15 years as we're suggesting here. And so then the last timeline I want to share with you is that on, Sherri, if you'll do the next slide, or Jeff, we've got the, so a backup one. There we go. So we're at May 13th. So first reading, we've gotta get, if you want to move forward, we've gotta get this passed through council to get to the voter registration. And then that would be on the November 5th, Tuesday, general election ballot. And Ms. Hyzer's here to go through some nuances if you have some questions about the state law. I would like to ask her to come forward. One of the questions about general election is the law stipulates that it has to be during a general election, and I think there's some election nuance, but general election is always considered only the November election of each year. Is that correct? So Jeff, if Ms. Hyzer can come forward.
Good evening, y'all. It's great to be with you. I always thought the general election was in an even year, first Tuesday after the first Monday on an even year. That is not how the State Election Commission identifies a general election. Their point of view, a general election is any election on a Tuesday that is the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November. What that means for, for this statute, if y'all are going forward, is that it is possible to have a, a referendum on the sales, of the transportation to sales tax in an odd year. So '24, obviously, general election, presidential election. Next November of '25, I believe, would also be a, a general election. Now, if y'all aren't interested in that, what I think we ought to do is get that confirmed by the Attorney General, because I don't want us to be going down the State Election Commission path and the Attorney General have another point of view. But I, I do believe that the law in South Carolina is that a general election does not have to be in an even-numbered year. But y'all have plenty of time this summer if you want to put it on your ballot for next November.
Good, and that kind of concludes the presentation. Again, if you have questions, there is some room. I said if you want to change the dollar amount or years, that's at council's discretion. But this is a plan that helps address our road needs and how you want to proceed. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, do we have any discussion?
Yeah, does this ordinance require the funds to be used and allocated per the presentation and recommendation of CTC?
No, meaning the outlined categories, and Ms. Hyzer can speak to that, that, um, yeah, she'll speak to that and we can elaborate.
There will be some flexibility, so that the projects identified are not the only projects that can be done. There wouldn't be a requirement to do all of the projects identified, particularly if the funds, although you're being, I think, conservative in your numbers, you still might not have the funds to complete all the projects. I think that as a practical matter, you would certainly want to, to do the bigger projects or the ones at the top of the list.
My question was more on, can we require them? So I'm particularly concerned about 521, Henry Harris, Barbourville, and Harrisburg roads, and making sure that those funds are allocated and can only be used for those purposes. So can that be added to the ordinance and specified in the ordinance?
It, it can be. And I want to think about this a And I want to think about this a little bit, but I've been before y'all before and said, well, an ordinance can be amended, because it's your, the ballot is what your voters are voting on. But I would believe that if y'all added a requirement like that to your ordinance, then it would be followed in good faith by your future councils.
Can it be added to the ballot?
Maybe, probably. Let me think through that. A lot of counties are wanting more flexibility, and what you're talking about is less flexibility, which can be an advantage. And what you might do is come up with a list of, these are absolutely the ones, and then have flexibility on some of the others, because you just don't know now if, you know, say that a right-of-way acquisition ends up being too costly, or it takes too long, or it's not going to work out. So you do want some flexibility, but I think we might be able to address your concern, but still have some flexibility in for the county to administer the program.
And those changes, I'm sorry, would have to happen through county council. So if there were any allocations from those buckets, county council is the one making those decisions on how those funds are allocated.
That is correct.
Okay. And then, final question is, how can we ensure that we aren't going to be in the same, or that we're not going to tax people today more, and then be in the same position that we're in 10 years from now? Because we've taken away concurrency requirements, we've taken away kind of any real guidelines for the rest of the county. So my concern is, if we approve this, and we don't have any requirements or having the county ensure that we're considering infrastructure, schools, crime, all the other issues that we've dealt with in the Panhandle, that we're not going to be in the same exact position and be asking our residents for funds all over again.
Jose, are you saying, hear me out, are you saying that if we do this, and we do the work up in Indianland, for example, some of these widenings, and then growth continues to go because everybody claims there's 7,000 yet to be built houses? So you're, what you're trying to say is, well, we do this, but then we're still in the same boat that we were before we did it because of all the growth? Is that what you're driving at?
That's my concern.
Trying to build a building for today's auction, but yet we know we have more employees later, and we're already...
Yeah, and the county council has not shown much foresight for growth, so if we have a bigger, it happened around Charlotte, look at what happened at 485, they built it, and all the growth came around it, because they didn't slow down the growth. So I have that concern too, about that, and I would prefer this to go to '25 until this council comes up with a plan to control growth. And I also think the developers should be paying for some of these road things. I've got one question for you. The sales tax goes by a list, is this one going to go by a list too? In other words, you got one road up at the top, and you got to complete it before you go to the next?
Not exactly. The requirements of the capital project sales tax are a little more specific. Where in the capital project sales tax, you have to have a project at a number. That is not required in this sales tax. Could you write that in? Yes, you could write that in, but I would encourage you to always have some flexibility, because the best estimating today may not be accurate by, you don't get to a road for six or seven years because of right-of-way problems, and then it costs more. So we need to bake some flexibility in, but you could have, you could do it in order, the statute doesn't require it.
What you're saying is a 521 costs $200 million, we won't, we can't do it because we ain't got enough money, so...
Or you do that one, and you don't do other ones down on the list.
All concern I got is you're not 9% sales tax. I already got constituents complaining about the sales tax in Lancaster County being higher, and they're saying that they can go elsewhere and it's not as high. And I know for a fact that Lowe's Home Improvement in Indianland, and Lowe's Home Improvement in Waxahachie, that is a half a percent lower, now it's going to be one and a half percent lower, and I don't have to go up through all Indianland to go to Waxahachie, so there's going to be some of that going on. I'm really concerned about, then Lancaster County becomes one of the counties with a lot of taxes.
I would like to, go ahead.
We'll be in the same boat as Dorchester, Richland, Berkeley, Charleston. So you're right, Terry, we'll be in the, as a county, 15th in population, but yet we have a top four, five in the taxation arena.
And I bet their per capita income's higher than Lancaster County.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. McGree.
We know we're at a point here where we need to expand the roads in Indianland, we need to resurface roads in the city, which are state roads, which is four of those city districts are in my district, so I'm concerned about that. And we know we don't have any other dedicated funding to do it. We can either make our minds up to move forward and at least try to do something about this traffic. I don't think it's any way we're going to be able to have flexibility where we can build paved roads, which are not in existence now, but we know where we're at, we got a problem. We got the problem, and this is the only way that locally we'll be able to control it, because it's local dollars, it's not state dollars, or federal dollars. And I know we got to have matching from the state or federal for some of these bigger projects, but either we do it now, or it's not going to happen. And if it's not going to happen, we need to tell our constituents, when they call us, "Sorry, it's not going to happen." We've got to make our minds up one way or the other.
Well, one thing that concerns me is the fact that if we move ahead with this now, we're going to have it on the same ballot with the school bond referendum. And I'm hearing a lot of talk from my constituents, "Well, I think I'll vote no, and the next one will be heck no," because we seem to be loading them up with a tax burden. I'm for this, I mean, if we approve this referendum going forward, I don't have a problem what the citizens decide. If they want it, they'll vote for it, if they don't, they won't. But I really do think we're putting it out there at a bad time, and I think we're dooming it to fail because of that timing.
Do you think next year will be better, when it's not going to be any changes, it's still going to be an increase?
We don't know what's going to happen next year, but I'm just saying, to load them up like we're loading them up, we've loaded them up with the detention center, we've loaded them up with the recreational facility.
And what we're doing is kicking that can down the road again.
And we're also loading them, we're talking about loading them up with fire millage.
I'm not.
I know, but that's on the table.
Go ahead, Mr. Marstall.
I do have some problems with this. Mr. Marstall said this has been talked about for a year, but I tell you, it seems like about three months there, he got through to our CTC and Mr. Kato to get, come up with numbers and come up with roads. I'm telling you, I go to 10 CTC meetings, and those guys, they really had a hard job, they really did, and they busted their tail to come up with a list. But I'm telling you, I think they, we needed more time. I think this is being rushed. We try to rush into these things and not think it through, just like all the questions and concerns everybody's having. I just really think we need to think it over a little bit more. Also, we need more time, our municipalities were, didn't know which way they wanted to go, they didn't have a lot of time. They didn't know if they wanted to opt-in or not. I don't know if they have or not.
They had the same report we got, they had the same list that you're looking at.
That's right, but did they opt-in? I mean, what I'm saying, it was rushed for everybody, and that concerns me. And I just think we need more time to look at this. We're making a big jump into something, putting more burden on our citizens with more tax, and I think what we do, we need to make sure it works at this time. I talk, looking at some of these numbers and all, and I talked to a guy about the burying the utilities on 521, and they said it could run up to $8 million a mile to bury these utilities, and because they're going to have to do a lot of boring under the road. So has that been figured in? I mean, that's some big money, that's some big numbers. And that comes from a reliable source that everybody on here knows. I'm not going to call his name, but it's a real reliable source, and he said he hoped the county had a lot of money to do it, because they didn't have the money to move the utilities. So that's a big concern for me, that, you know, that we need to look at all of that. Number four, I have a problem with, you know, we already got on the school referendum on the ballot, which, and then the possible talking about a fire millage, and I just think right now is just a bad time for it, I really do. I'm scared citizens, like Mr. Blackman said, is going to say, "No, no, no, hell no," on that ballot, just because of so much on them. Because we're at a point that this economy's not really good right now, the way people is, as I've said before, their groceries are 25% higher than they were a year or two ago. Everything they do is higher, you do, it's going to cost you more, so. People don't have a lot of money right now. I know 1% sales tax ain't a lot of money to them, but still, it's another tax. So I think we need to maybe put it off another year, and just slow it down a little bit, and just let, go back to CTC and Mr. Kato and them, and let them iron it out a little more, and make sure, this might be exactly what they want. But I think we need to slow it down and just look at everything, and I think it would have a better shot of passing at a time of its own.
I am sharing all those same exact concerns, but I feel like I would be more comfortable if we had specifically delineated those projects that I had mentioned because of the demands in the Panhandle and what we are seeing, because there is a significant need for that in the Panhandle. I am concerned if we don't have that specified, that that is going to be an even bigger problem in the Panhandle, because they're going to look at it and see all the same things and say, "It's not even promising that it's going to help us in the Panhandle." And I think that's going to be a big problem. So I'm not sure if the motion is on the table already, but if it is, I want to put in an amendment to have that specified in the ordinance and in the ballot.
I will, if I can elaborate on that. So we have every jurisdiction, all the towns, city, state, SEDOT, and the list you have at your place here is a list of all the requested roads, every road requested by town, city, has been accepted, so they've all had input, we have it here. But to the point Mr. Louise about, it's hard to have on a ballot a list of priorities, and certainly we wouldn't look to have 125 roads on there for people to say they're going to approve it in that order, because we don't know, some things will move and flow. But the one thing I want to make sure we highlight is that, for instance, if we do go forward with Henry Harris, a lot of these things will be moving in tandem. We'll be working with RFATs on 521 and setting that money aside. If SEDOT says, "Well, we want to focus on Harrisburg Road first, but Henry Harris," because they're putting in money too, "may not be for year seven," so that's where I think Ms. Heiser's talking about, having the flexibility, because we don't know at this point in time if the state money, which will help put some of these deals over, when they can go. And so when talking about roundabouts and intersections, I actually see eight of these projects moving at once, and so it just depends, that's why it's just hard to lock down.
With all due respect, I think the residents in my district, and I believe the residents in Mr. Carr's and Mr. Graham's districts, do not trust the process. I think they need to see some clarity, and I think having that clarity is going to be significant for them to approve something.
Remember, we have citizens too that want our roads paved. We know the congestion in Indianland, but we've got roads that, I know in my district, that are in terrible condition, because they're state roads, and the money's just not there. So I understand the needs in Indianland, but please understand the needs in other areas.
I'm fine with that. I'm just saying, I want to see it allocated pursuant to the CTC's recommendations. I just have a concern with having it in this general bucket, and then everyone's just pulling money from that bucket without having the allocation.
Can you say the, what the CTC is recommending? Can we say that in the referendum?
Well, that's when you get back to, this is our work list, but if you say that, you're basically saying 125 roads is what the CTC is recommending.
Let me add some clarification here. When you look at doing some of these major projects, they won't be the first ones on the list to be done. 521, for example, will probably be three to four years down the road before that work is done, because you got to do all the design work.
Before it even starts. Before they even start, because they first have to do all the design.
They have to do all the design work and everything like that. Now, can we, could we put language in there that says, "521's the number-one project, it's going to be done," but it's not going to be the first thing that's out of the chute? And same thing for any of these state roads, you're going to have construction or design, you have to take public comment, I mean, it's not a check out the box and we're going to do this kind of thing.
I agree with that.
I mean, I understand that, and that's true, but I can tell you the expectations of the voter, like Mr. Marstall's thinking that in 15 years, everything's going to be done, because that's what Mr. Marstall said tonight.
What generally happens...
I don't think that's going to happen.
Excuse me, what generally happens is that in the instances of county completing their first transportation sales tax, right now, Richland County is in the process of reauthorizing. I don't, Charleston has added a half a penny but hasn't reauthorized, but realistically, your transportation projects never are totally done. So you spend this 400 million, and in 15 years, you're going to need a 500 million. That's just the reality of it.
Which led to the second point that I made earlier in the evening, which is, we need to have the controls in place. We do have controls.
I said, it will not solve all of our problems.
Yeah, but I don't...
15 years from now, it's going to be a repeat of certain things.
That's our choice, all seven of us are part of that choice.
Jose, how do we do 521 in such a manner that we know in 10, 15 years that we're not in the same boat that we are right now? How do we accomplish that?
So we look at what's in the pipeline right now in terms of vertical construction, horizontal construction, permitted and approved and waiting to go under construction, and everything that's by right. We anticipate what those needs are going to be, we add that into the current plan, and then this council going forward can implement some concurrency standards, so whenever we approve new developments, we look at those projects individually to ensure that the infrastructure is in place, that the police and EMS services are in place, that the school has capacity for those new developments. All of that gets looked at at the time before we make a decision to approve any further developments.
No, but if we go down this road, I'm just talking about the highway itself, we're going to widen 521. How do we know, based on the growth, that that's going to be adequate in 15 years?
Based off of the current growth, based off everything that's approved and under construction right now, we plan for that right now.
So you're saying we can study that right now?
Correct.
I need to study.
And if we find that it's not going to be adequate, are we going to forelane it? Are we going to double-deck it, or?
That's what we have to look at.
I'm not arguing, I'm asking what your thoughts were to know how we're going to know in 15 years, we're not in the same boat that we are right now.
There are already studies out there that project out 15 years. Now, how accurate they are, I mean, it's a projection, but there is that information, RFATs contains that information right now.
It's twofold. It's we look at what is in the books right now, what can be done without any of our input, what's already approved, and we use that as a future planning model. Then we add a second layer, that is, any additional approvals that are going to be required by this council will have to look at everything that I just said, the infrastructure, the crime, EMS services, schools, and look at those impacts and make sure that those impacts are covered. We also could implement some impact fees and help cover some of those costs, so that when the roads do need to be done, when the roads do need to be repaired, when new construction does come in, we have the funds to be able to cover those. does come in, we have the funds to be able to cover those.
But to that point, I think what's in the pipeline as far as transportation goes, we do know that the state of North Carolina is planning on breaking ground in 2026 to send three lanes of Johnson Road 521 into Lancaster. And so we know they're gonna three-lane 521 to widen it. We also, if the school bond issue passes, Harrisburg Road, where they have the Barberville Road, and the Harrisburg Road bought land for future schools. So if that goes forward, we know that those two areas will have transportation needs on our end going forward. So not even taking into fact, the permits still to be coming and other development coming, but we know those are two things on the horizon, which is part of the genesis for this proposal.
How do you state that in a bond referendum? How do you state that? And I understand what Jose is saying. And it would be wonderful if we could do that, but how do we put that into words in a referendum to follow? And that's what we do with a referendum.
That's what Ms. Heiser's here for.
Well, and maybe what y'all'd like to do is give this ordinance first reading, like by title only, or first reading, just so we can continue to keep it alive and we wordsmith what we can to give y'all some of the comfort that you are seeking and that will, in order to the comfort of your voters.
This is exactly why I think it should go to 2025, because you're gonna, when you do all of this, we're just on a, we always seem to be doing things in a rush. We never take time to deliberate them.
Well, I was gonna ask, so on the May 13th, that's the first ordinance. So if we just approve every single next meeting, will be done in June. So what happens between the end of June and July?
I honestly don't think that we'll be in a position to have y'all approve the final ordinance before maybe your July meeting. I know I'm pretty tied up in June, and I can't be here all the time. What happens after, to the extent y'all vote to put it on the ballot, and you're satisfied with the ordinance and with the question, you then use your county resources to educate the public on education campaign?
I'm just saying, so we don't have to make a decision today. So we can move it to the next meeting, so you can do some of that research that we're talking about, and we'd still be in the same timeline. Is that correct? I mean, other than...
But Jose, I think the first question we need to ask ourselves, it appears there's three votes right now that says we need to wait till next year. So I'm not sure where the other votes lie, but that's the first thing I think we need to decide. Because if we decide to wait one year, then we've got plenty of time. Well, and of course, you know, we'll drag our feet anyway, but we can, we'll have a year to answer all these questions, get the wording like Ms. McGriff wants to see.
I'm just saying, you know, I don't have a problem doing it later, but I know how we are at kicking the can down the road and never making a decision. It'll be four, five years from now.
But could I make a suggestion, based on comments that we've heard tonight, that we pass first reading tonight as is, second reading, either that or we put it off till the next meeting. And this is the reason I'm saying this, because Ms. Heiser's already said that it's not as certain that we could even put it on the ballot next year.
We would like to get, we'd like to get a second opinion on that, just to be safe. I mean, I would hate for y'all to say, well, Franny said this, and then, oh, Franny was wrong. So let us...
We ought to postpone a first reading until we get that answer.
Well, then, we need a motion to do so.
Oh, I'll make that motion.
And we have a motion by Mr. Graham.
I second.
So what's the motion? Your motion?
Motion is to postpone the reading until Ms. Heiser gives us, or the Attorney General gives us an opinion if we can put it on the 2025 ballot, our election.
Motion good enough?
And doing the research on how it can be worded.
Because something tells me you're gonna want that answer this summer or next summer.
Yes.
Preferably we'll want it before we...
Thank you.
Well, after December 31st, '24, I might not have any input.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Graham, a motion by Mr. Graham, a second by Mr. Louise. Is there any further discussion? If not, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? So we have made an amendment to put all first reading to a time to be specified. All those in favor of the original motion is amended. You have a question?
Since we voted to do it, postpone it.
That was the amendment.
That was the amendment.
You're amending?
We amended the motion to postpone it.
No, I think you voted to postpone it until we get the AG opinion back, as well as the other information, so we don't need to go back to the first reading, correct?
All right, we're good then. Moving on.
Thank y'all very much. It's always fun to be with you.
Thank you.
Keep me on my toes.
Yeah, this was a barrel of fun tonight. Okay, we're moving on to item 8H. First reading of ordinance 2024-1907 regarding an amendment to the fiscal year 2024 budget relating to the purchase of a bulldozer. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Have a motion by Mr. Mosteller. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Blackman. Discussion.
We have a presentation.
Got a presentation, sorry. Ms. Harris.
We have some information. Basically, what this is, Ms. Harris can elaborate about purchasing a bulldozer now versus what we budgeted for potentially next year, since we have a good deal on a used vehicle, or dozer.
Go ahead, Ms. Harris. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you out.
Oh, no, you pretty much said it all. There's a request for a budget transfer of $63,000 to be able to purchase the used bulldozer in this year and eliminate the possibility of having to include it as a part of the budget request for next fiscal year. And so the transfer, like the other, is above the allowable threshold for the administrative approval. It's a departmental transfer to move funds from the solid waste department capital equipment line item into the roads department capital equipment line item to be able to make the purchase.
All right, thank you. Being I have the mic, I would like to make my comment first. Thank you to the Public Works Department for being, having foresight to look at this opportunity as a good deal and to save the county a substantial amount of money. Is there any other comments or questions?
I was just curious, how many hours on this bulldozer?
Do we know that? How many hours are on the bulldozer?
I want to see, it's less than 4,000.
Less than 4,000? How many hours do we put on the bulldozer in a year, just out of curiosity?
Out of curiosity, we haven't had one.
So we've only been putting zero. Now you're asking for hours.
The one we had, as you know, we...
That answers that.
Hasn't been functional in a few years, so we've been renting when we get a new job. Usually, it's an interdepartmental job, or a major roadway washout, which we have two or three closures right now we need to work on. So I would say that we put anywhere from $1,200 to $2,000 on it.
What's a good number for total hours on a dozer before it's time for the scrapyard?
If it's us, it's a good many.
8,000, 10,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would think it would be more than that. I mean, diesel engines last a long time.
That's not something y'all gonna be using every day, all day long, day after day. That's just...
Lord, I hope not.
That's why I say, it's gonna last you longer than somebody that is doing it day-in, day-out, all day long.
And this, like I said, in looking at this, it just, it suits the need for what we plan to use it for and maybe what we don't plan to use it for, to have there. Because like I said, it's more difficult now to, I think we rented one for some washouts from the January 9th, so we rented one for, you know, like a week, $5,700.
Wow.
It's just more difficult, but that was our, instead of big-ticking trying to budget to purchase a large piece of equipment like that, unlike a motor grader or a black coat that you're gonna be using every day, so to speak, it kind of made sense to rent. But the needs now with all the problems we're having...
That's washing out, that's true.
Like I said, we do a good bit of interdepartmental work, too, to kind of help, also help save the other departments.
That's good.
According to Google, 7,000 to 10,000 hours. So you're right in the ballpark, Mr. Blackman. Okay, do we have any other questions? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Passes six to zero.
You falling asleep down there?
I'm checking my numbers.
And are we okay if we put that on the consent agenda for next meeting?
Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
At least I am. I shouldn't speak for everyone.
Go on to consent agenda next meeting. Okay, we're gonna move on to item 9A, discussion action item, approval of appointment to the Vanwack Fire Protection District Fee Board.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion from Mr. Graham. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Louise. Do we have any discussion? Not all those in favor, please raise your right hand. It passes six to zero. It's unanimous. Okay, we're gonna move down to item 12A, going into executive session, and I need a motion to go into executive session for the receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding a potential contractual matter relating to an economic development project, Project Tree. The receipt of legal advice subject to attorney-client privilege regarding a potential contractual matter relating to the River Chase Development Agreement, and the receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding a potential contractual matter relating to the acquisition of property, and to invite economic development staff into the executive session to discuss the first matter. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion from Ms. McGriff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Graham?
Just for the record, I will be recusing myself from one of the executive session items due to a position I have with one of the parties involved.
Okay.
And if there's a vote afterwards in that matter, I'll recuse myself in public forum also.
All right. Well, noted. So we have a motion to second. All those in favor going into executive session? Vote is six to zero. It's unanimous. We are in executive session.
Yes, sir.
Can you get a motion to come out of executive session? Have a motion by Mr. Mascheller, or a second by Ms. McGriff. All those in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous, six to zero.
Mr. Chairman, council met in executive session in regards to three items. The receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding a potential contractual matter relating to an economic development project, Project Tree. The receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding a potential contractual matter relating to the River Chase Development Agreement. And the receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding a potential contractual matter relating to the acquisition of property. No motions were made and no votes were taken.
Have a motion. Have a motion for Ms. McGriff. Do we have a second? Have a second for Mr. Graham. You can listen to the vote. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll call the vote. All those in favor. All those opposed. Motion passes five, four, and one, recusal. Motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Motion by Mr. Louise, second by Ms. McGriff. All those in favor. We are adjourned.